Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 26, 2025 City Council meeting. We will call the meeting in order at 5:07 PM. First up, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Hanson, will you please lead us?
You have to be with the mayor.
Pledge allegiance to the God, the United States, the American, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, eternal.
Next, full call, please.
Okay. Mayor Hudson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Pride.
Here.
Councilmember Busby.
Here.
Thank you.
Any changes to the agenda?
Yes, if it, this is the council, I would like to ask that we continue item nine A and 10A until the next available meeting. As I shared with the council, the application is incomplete, and this will give the applicant time to complete that, and then we'll come back as soon as it's ready. And the other item I wanted to ask is if you wouldn't mind moving up the Joint City Council and Library Board of Trustees meeting to immediately following the consent calendar, since Christine kind of has a long commute these days, she probably depart right after that, so that would be moving it to item basically 10A.
Okay.
No objection.
Pleasure the council?
It's fine.
Barry, any?
No, absolutely, no, no problem.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good, we'll take those changes to the agenda. Does that vote at all?
Oh, no.
No, okay. Um, next up, we will be going into closed suit, closed session pursuant to government code sections 54954.3, the public will have an opportunity to directly address the legislative body on the items below prior to the council convening into closed session. Public comments are generally restricted to three minutes. Item 5A, Public Employee Performance Evaluation, section 54957, title City Manager. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we will go into closed session at 5:10 PM.
Go for it.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone, we returned out of closed session at 5:46 and went directly into the introduction of our new city librarian. Christine, welcome, and we will be doing a report out before we go into item seven.
Thank you, Mayor, with the council made on one item in closed session, it was a public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code 54957, title was City Manager, and the report out was evaluation held.
Perfect, thank you for that. Next up, we will have item 7A, Proclamation for Library Card Sign Up Month, and we'll be getting this from our library liaison, Matt Busby.
Yeah, thank you. So, City of Willow's proclamation, Library Card Sign Up Month, whereas libraries play a vital role in the education and development of children, teens, and adults, serving as the cornerstone for lifelong learning, literacy, and community engagement, and whereas a library card is one of the most important tools a person can have, opening doors to free resources, including books, eBooks, technology, educational programs, research databases, and job-seeking assistance, and a 3D printer, and whereas the American Library Association and libraries across the nation celebrate September as Library Card Sign Up Month, encouraging families and individuals to take advantage of the resources and opportunities available through their local libraries, and whereas libraries strengthen communities by fostering creativity, inclusion, and civic participation while supporting students, families, and individuals of all ages in pursuit of knowledge and personal growth, and whereas the City of Willow's Community Library continues to serve as a trusted and welcoming institution, providing essential services that support literacy, lifelong learning, and access to information for all residents. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Matt Busby, on behalf of the City Council and the Mayor of City of Willow's Evan Hudson, uh, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as Library Card Sign Up Month in the City of Willow's, and I encourage all residents to visit the library, sign up for a library card, and explore the many resources and opportunities the libraries provide.
Ah, already signed. I don't.
You're going, you're going up there, yep, you have to get up there, you have to take your picture.
Picture.
Up, Doug wants to do the same thing.
And if anybody receiving a proclamation tonight has a couple of words to say regarding that proclamation, uh, after we're done reading it and we get pictures, you're more than welcome to set up to the mic. So, uh, item 7B, Proclamation National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, will be read by Councilmember Pride.
Thank you. So, City of Willow's Proclamation for Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, whereas suicide is a leading cause of death across the United States, claiming the lives of thousands each year and affecting countless families, friends, and communities, and whereas every life lost to suicide is one too many, and it is our shared responsibility to raise awareness, reduce stigma, and ensure that all people have access to the help and support they need, and whereas September is recognized as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, providing an opportunity, an important opportunity, to educate the public, foster hope, and highlight available resources such as the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, which offers free and confidential support 24/7, and whereas mental health and wellness are essential to the well-being of individuals, families, and communities, and it is vital to show compassion, encourage open dialogue, and connect people to resources that promote healing and resilience, and whereas the City of Willow's is committed to supporting suicide prevention efforts, promoting mental health awareness, and standing with survivors and those impacted by suicide. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Lori Pride, on behalf of Evan Hudson, Mayor of the City of Willow's, and on behalf of the Willow City Council and the citizens of Willow's, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the City of Willow's, and encourage all residents to join in this effort by learning the warning signs, sharing resources, and offering compassion to those who may be struggling. Together, we can save lives and bring hope to our community. In witness whereof, Evan will set his hand an official seal on this 26th day of August 2025, and I believe Elise Garrison is here to accept it.
Um, good evening, my name is Elise Garrison, and I work for Behavioral Health Coordinating Suicide Prevention Services for Glen County, and I just wanted to share about our annual upcoming event, and we host each September, um, it's our Suicide Prevention Town Hall event, and this year it will be taking place in Willow's at Murdoch Elementary's Cafeteria, and it will be on World Suicide Prevention Day, so September 10, from 5:30 to 7:30, we'll be highlighting local efforts, having some presenters speak about actionable things you can do to prevent suicide in your life, um, as well as having a panel for open questions regarding suicide prevention efforts in Glen County, so we hope you all can attend, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, last but not least, item 7C, Proclamation National Recovery Month. Whereas substance use disorders and mental health challenges affect millions of Americans touching the lives of people in every community, including the City of Willow's, and whereas recovery is possible, and with access to treatment, support services, and community resources, individuals can lead fulfilling, healthy, and productive lives, and whereas each September, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration and communities across the nation observe National Recovery Month to celebrate the gains made by those in recovery, promote evidence-based treatment and services, and reduce the stigmas surrounding substance use and mental health conditions, and whereas Recovery Month provides an opportunity to highlight the strength and resilience of individuals in recovery, recognize the dedication of service providers, and encourage those still struggling to seek help and support. Whereas the City of Willow's is committed to supporting recovery efforts, fostering compassion, and working to ensure that all residents have access to the resources they need to live healthy and hopeful lives. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Evan Hudson, Mayor of the City of Willow's, and on behalf of the City, Willow City Council and citizens of Willow's, do hereby proclaim this month of September 2025 as National Recovery Month. In the City of Willow's, and encourage residents to support individuals and families in recovery, to celebrate their successes, and to help build a community that embraces hope, healing, and wellness, and witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand an official seal this 26th day of August 2025, and this we represented to Bella. Bodre. Bodri.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Um, my name is Bella, I'm with Glen County Behavioral Health Substance Use Disorder Services, I'm community outreach advocate, and I'm here to share with you guys an event we will be holding in Lally Park, Orland, and it's going to be September 19 from 2:00 to 5:00, and our theme is staying alive in 25, and we're going to be celebrating 21 years of health and recovery, so we're going to have free food, raffle prizes, resources, speakers, kids' activities, and we're coming together to celebrate those in recovery, shine light on treatment, and all the resources we have in Glen County.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have item eight, which will be, all items on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved with a single vote unless removed for separate discussion by the council or city manager. Individuals wishing to speak on consent items or matters not on the agenda are asked to complete a speaker card and submit it to the city clerk. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor and council members and are limited to three minutes. By law, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the posted agenda. Is there any public comment?
Uh, good evening, City Council, members of the public, I know you guys know why I'm here. Unfortunately, our ER at the hospital, my name's Lauren Still, I'm the administrative medical center, unfortunately, at the hospital, our ER is about six weeks out from no longer being able to be safely staffed. At that point, CDPH, if we've been on diversion for 48 hours, CDPH comes in and closes our ER. We have a hope that we can keep our swing bed program open for about 45 days after that, that's to buy us some time so we can help staff that are affected by our hospital closure to find jobs and transition to their next items, next steps. We have a path forward to preserve our clinics, outpatient specialty care, outpatient primary care will remain in Willow's, will remain at the hospital building at 1133 West Sycamore. I don't see a path forward for ancillary services like lab radiology and physical therapy, we are still working with our regulatory partners to find about licensing and what we can do there, but to be perfectly honest, it's not looking promising. I'm hopeful for maybe some kind of Hail Mary that we still have a couple of weeks left where this decision can be reversed, but we have to be honest, um, I know I don't have good answers for anybody at this point in time, I know there's a lot of open questions, I'm here to answer any questions, obviously, the public comment period isn't the appropriate time, but I want you folks to know that I'm ready and available to help transition however possible, and the hospital is committed to being good community partners and stewards moving forward, whatever that may look like. So I specifically appreciate Councilmember Thomas and Councilmember Hanson for your help and support over the last couple of months, it's been a terribly difficult process, but everybody on the council, the fire department, those letters, those stories went right on top of our appeal, they were the first page that you opened up when we submitted our paperwork to CMS. Unfortunately, the emotional appeal of the human and practical consequences of CMS's decision to take away our critical access designation fell on deaf ears, the only thing they care about is the technical measurement of being a mile and a half too short to another hospital that's the same size and same services as the one we have here. Again, I'm incredibly sorry for everybody, I know from a personal perspective what it means to have those ER doors open versus closed, I know what it means to patient outcomes, I know what it means to folks in the community who are, uh, don't have the transportation or the gas money to get up to Inlow, and my heart breaks for what's happening here, and I wish we had some other path forward, it's just not looking that way, so. Whatever I can do to help facilitate conversations, um, I'm here to help, but again, I'm just, I'm sorry, but I'm grateful for everybody's support here and guidance and, um, feedback as we went through this process.
Would it be possible for us to restart a letter campaign to the gentleman that signed that letter?
I will submit all of that stuff to Benton tomorrow, absolutely, um, what-
I'd be happy to write another letter.
I, I don't think another letter, we will submit it just directly to him, um, all of our submissions, all of the letters, there are some 2,000 letters that we got from various people, they were all packaged up, our petition forms were packaged up, all of our technical appeals were packaged up and submitted to CMS, so Benton was one of the people on the Critical Access Designation Committee, so he definitely saw it, but at this point CMS has said that their decision is final, uh, the Hail Mary is that maybe, um, Congressman Lamafa can make a couple more phone calls, appeal to President Trump, get some sort of overruling with CMS and Dr. Oz and RFK, but I've been told that it would take an act of Congress to reverse the decision.
We appreciate every effort that you've made.
I, I know this is far from the outcome anybody wanted, I know our hospital has struggles and challenges, but I also get to see the wins that we have.
Well, I've been impressed by the improvements and the changes that we've seen in the last several years.
I think we were headed in the right direction, um, I'm doing what I can to help each of my staff members transition to whatever it looks like after we lose our critical access designation, um, unfortunately, I don't have enough lifeboats in our regional system to offer everybody jobs, and that's, that, that hurts, but I'm working to bring in all of our community partners, all of our fellow agencies, all of, you know, the businesses in the area, Tahaema Health and Human Services is coming down, all the One Stops, Inlow, Partnership, Numacare, TCAP, they're all going to be at a job fair for staff, we're setting up resume writing workshops and interview coaching sessions for folks, and to the extent that it's possible, I'm trying to make warm introductions to hiring managers to every single staff member that expresses an interest, and whenever they see a job, hey, if I know so-and-so at such and such agency, I will, I will put in a good word for you. Again, it's, uh, coming up short on what I really wish we could do here.
Well, Lauren, you've done outstanding work and phenomenal job with that facility also, I mean, as I say, over the last several years, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a good facility.
We have a lot of good people there.
So, and, uh, but, uh-
I know the-
I'm still hoping that helps, yeah, but thank you for all your efforts, yeah, so.
I can only imagine how hard this has been, thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Any other public comment?
Good evening, uh, my name is Scott Candell, uh, I am going to briefly just talk about, uh, I was here for items nine A and 10A, which were continued and pulled from today's calendar, uh, it was just done today, as, while I was here, I thought I might as well just introduce myself, I wanted to thank staff, uh, staff has been phenomenal in working with us, uh, what happened is, uh, we are applying for a permit, and, uh, we applied under a certain company, uh, that company has another cannabis permit in another jurisdiction, after talking to staff, we determined that it would be better to have a unique company or the business in this jurisdiction so that it would be easier for financial reasons, for tax reasons, to keep everything separate, so we started this new company in order to try to make this happen, uh, and then we were told that, uh, there was some more paperwork that we still have to fill, to fill out, uh, to comply with all the local regulations, so because of that, uh, this item was continued so that we can comply with the regulations, and, uh, it should be back in front of you within a couple of weeks, and I want to thank you for your patience, and I look forward to seeing you then, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. City might charge you to fill one out.
Yeah, hey, I just, yeah, we're talking about hospital, is, uh, and I really want to thank Mr. Hanson and Mr. Thomas for, and Marty and, and stuff for our meeting on Friday, very great dialogue, um, as we heard from, uh, Lauren, as we did this morning in our board meeting, is, you know, there, there's not much we can do right now, we're, we're in real time watching things unfold, but, um, from our board, from the county board of supervisors, we did, are, we are setting a meeting or on our agenda for what we had talked about, and, uh, we're going to move forward, and I really want to, really, I really wanted to do is come up here and thank you guys for the great dialogue that we had and how we're going to move forward, because we, we, we don't have the option to fail, as we talked about, we have to be able to figure out from a county-wide, from a holistic approach, how we are going to adequately serve our communities, all of them, whether it's Elk Creek, Butte City, Willow's, whatever it is, but we have an obligation as leaders to, uh, make sure that, uh, um, we supply some type of service, because we know that our sheriffs is going to be out going, doing their thing, we know, because they're going to be gone, we know the fire departments are going to be tasked completely, we know all these things, we know our ambulances can be going separate ways, so, but we have to figure this out, so I really just wanted to thank you, you guys, and thank Marty for, um, her leadership too, that, when we had in, in our meeting, and just let you know that we, we are putting it on our agenda, and, uh, I, I'm hoping that, uh, we all can come together as a, as the two cities and the county on how we can fix, um, a small portion of that problem that we're going to see when, when Glenn medical does have to, to leave us, so I do want to thank you guys.
You're welcome, Jim.
Perfect.
Thank you. I don't know if Jim actually qualified what our discussion was, trying to make sure we had 24/7 ALS ambulance services available for the community, and that was the initial focus, to try to make sure that we had ALS ambulances, and that's what we're working towards, and thanks to Chief Monk who had some great ideas for-
Very intelligent man.
So, um, it was a positive step forward in a very gruesome time for us.
Yes, it is.
So, we'll continue to work on that.
Yeah.
Thanks for the county's involvement.
Even if we have all of our ambulances that stay in place, we're still, they're going to be running somewhere, and, you know, the, the county, we do, we did buy an ambulance, so we do have that asset, but we didn't even figure out how we're going to utilize that asset, and I think the business model is something that we really need to take that, that approach on, and, uh, Chief Monk, uh, he, uh, don't ever let that guy go.
No.
He's a very smart, very smart person, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, supervisor. All right, any other public comment? Okay, so you know more public comment, we will move on, uh, our next item, item I, nine A will be continued. Approve the consent. Oh, Jesus. Motion to approve consent calendar. Sorry. So I, so I have a first and a second to approve the consent Allen calendar items, eight A registered approval, eight B minutes approval, eight C spyglass contract, eight D updated city mechanic salary schedule, um, any further discussion? Okay, with that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion pass. Next up is item nine A, which we will be continuing to our next, our next meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, as soon as the paperwork is submitted.
Okay, perfect, and then we will continue on to item 10A, which will also be continued based on the same paperwork that we're waiting on.
Correct.
Okay, so our next item, we're going to be moving item 10C to the front of the line, um, Joint City Council and Library Board of Trustees meeting, recommended action approved scheduling and convening a joint meeting of the City Council and Library Board of Trustees to potentially discuss the memorandum of understanding between the Library Board and the City of Willow's, current library board policies receive an update from the city librarian on proposed future library programs and any other mutually agreed upon agenda items as requested by both governing bodies. I will hand this over to Marty Brown.
Um, I don't have as very much to add, only that, that the contents of what you just read was the recommendation for the focus of that joint meeting if the council decides to move forward with that, and that this was, um, both a request from the mayor and vice mayor, so I don't have very much to add it, other than I think it's up to the council for a discussion and to decide how you want to move forward.
Okay.
Did you want to add anything, you brought that forward?
No, just in case there's any questions.
Um, I guess I'll kind of take charge on this, so the idea here was, um, for us to get together, uh, as, if you were here at 5:45, we did hire a full-time library director now, Christine Watson, welcome, um, we're excited about that, that means that we have somebody here, um, every day to help in the library, to make sure that things are running smoothly, um, still getting, still getting your feet underneath you there, um, and so we took it as an opportunity for us to look over, um, some of the policies and things like that that are running the library, uh, with that being said, we've been doing that with just about every department at the city, a lot of them we've been finding are dated back into the 80s, I think we even found one that was in the 70s at one point, um-
Some of the codes, yes.
Some of the codes, so our, our goal is to try and make sure that our, uh, our city and all of our policies are brought up to the 21st century and are ready to go for, the things that we face today, um, you know, computers weren't as prevalent back in the 80s, and, you know, cell phones weren't, aren't, weren't what they are now, um, and the internet wasn't what it is now either, um, so there's a lot of things that have changed, uh, as far as that goes, and just kind of make sure that we're getting on the same page with one of our boards and make sure that we're doing the best thing that we can for our community and the people that come visit the City of Willow's library. Rick, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, I pretty much, uh, would ditto what you just said, um, the memorandum of understanding with the library board dates to 1968, and with the departure of our longstanding relationship with the City of Orland, and we have a new hire, it just seemed logical that, um, since my time on this council, we haven't had a conversation and, um, as a joint meeting with the library board, I know Evan and then currently Matt sit as a liaison to the library board, um, I just felt that it would be appropriate, a good time to have a conversation as we go through and try to update our memorandum of understanding, we've, we've looked at, uh, the municipal code we're updating, we're looking at several other, we were just, we've got some financial policies that we're going to update tonight on the agenda, so it's kind of a plethora of things we've been doing to get us more current into the 19th, 21st century, away from the 19th century, is what I meant to say to start with, um, so it, it just seemed logical thing to do, and that kind of gives our new librarian a consistent direction from both the council's perspective as well as the library board's perspective, and, uh, give her clear sailing instructions too, and then we want to hear what she has with fresh eyes to see how it goes, so, um, that was, that was my motivation, and that was my concurrent with you, Mr. Hudson, to, uh, call for a special meeting, or joint meeting.
Perfect. Um, at this point, I will give it to the pleasure of the council, anything further? Okay, is there any public comment regarding the Joint City Council and Library Board of Trustees meeting?
Mr.?
Nothing?
If nothing from the public, uh, Mr. Mayor, just, uh, were you thinking a daytime meeting or an evening meeting, it's, uh, harvest time coming up right on us, so.
Well, that is a great discussion item, how does that work for you, I mean, I know-
Oh, daytime. Oh, daytime meetings would be out. I mean, I definitely want to attend the meeting, but I mean, you know, it's kind of that time of year in Sacramento Valley.
Okay.
You know how that goes.
So we're leaning towards a nighttime meeting. I'm assuming that we'd have to try and make sure we can get as many of the library board members to agree to a night or later meeting as well. Is there any opposition to a evening meeting regarding this?
None from me. Christine, do you have a thoughts?
Happy to set up whatever is necessary between the library board of trustees and the city council.
Okay.
Whenever that needs to happen.
Okay. I leave it to the pleasure of the council to.
I would just say we direct staff to approach the library board of trustees and maybe get some dates that work for them, run the evening by them. And then bring back a couple of dates for council consideration.
Yep, sounds good.
I think we have consensus with that, so perfect. Leave it to you and Marty or both you two to get together and Marty can work on our schedules, you can work on the library board schedules and we'll come together and some fun. Perfect. All right. Moving on, we will go back to item 10B. Cali Love Willows LLC Retail Dispensary Cannabis Business License at 157 North Butte Street. Recommended action, adopt resolution approving a retail dispensary cannabis business license for Cali Love Willows LLC to operate at 157 North Butte Street. Joe, this one has your name attached to it.
Good evening, council. As you mentioned, this is for considering adopting a resolution approving a retail dispensary cannabis business license for Cali Love Willows LLC at 157 North Butte Street. This item recently passed the planning commission conditional use permit on August 5th, 2025. And prior to that, they completed a phase one and phase two application. The phase one application was reviewed by the city manager and myself. That included a criminal background, which was a pretty intensive criminal background. We just didn't do a live scan. We contracted with a company who looks at a lot of different things from liens to tax notices to criminal background. A plan of operations, got their property under consent forms and compliance with all the zoning in that area, along with other things. They were approved for the phase one application by the city manager and were moved on to the phase two application. The phase two application requested some more, some documents that basically get into the knit and grid of the business. This includes a security plan, floor plan, their experience and reporting and consent, reporting and audit consent from the city to come look at their records at, at any time. So they passed that and then, as I mentioned, they moved on to the conditional use permit, which was approved by the planning commission on August 5th. The applicant currently operates a licensed dispensary called Cali Love in Weaverville. They have no Department of Cannabis Control violations. This demonstrates familiarity with the DCC compliance and inventory controls. One of the owner, Melissa White, owns a 10,000 square foot mixed light cultivation in Trinity County. And Stephen Sutton owns a licensed nursery in Reading. They handle their own state and local licensing and use COVA point of sale integrated with metric to ensure seed to sale tracking, inventory reconciliation and compliant record keeping. The application includes a comprehensive security plan with a BSIS registered guard during business hours, 24/7 alarm monitoring, interior and exterior video consisting of 16 cameras with a minimum of 90 days storage. The applicant proposes online ordering with in-store pickup and delivery service that follows all DCC requirements. Their hours of operation will be between, not between the hours of 7:00 PM and 8:00 PM, and that's per city code. And finally, they propose a 2% gross sale receipt remittance to the city. And this would be in addition to any sales tax that we currently get. And with that overview and a lot more paperwork you have in front of you, I'll, I'll take any questions you have. And Stephen is in the audience too for, for questions as well.
Pleasure to the council.
Well, just a quick question. We have 52 conditions of approval. How many of these listed are state required requirements? I assume majority of them.
I don't know the exact number that would be state required. All of the ones that are taken out of our Willows Municipal Code are included in that. And then we included some, some extra pieces to that puzzle, like our Willows Municipal Code goes a little further on hours of operation than the state code does. So I think state code is six in the morning till nine at night. And then our code, you know, tightens that window up. So we're able to be more restrictive, just not less than the state code. And I will add one other thing on that, since you brought that point up. You'll notice there's a city council conditions that is, it's only two conditions that I've included. And this is as attachment number two, I believe. And the two conditions that are included in that is basically just memorializing the 2% of the gross sales receipt. And then the second one is a, some language I sent to the city attorney just that states that everything included in phase one application, phase two application, additional information, emails is all part of this conditions of approval. So that's basically just some, some tighter language to make sure everything they submitted is a part of the conditions of approval.
That's my question for now at the moment.
Okay. Any further questions for Joe?
Not me at the moment.
I saw a couple of questions on some of the conditions that were in the conditional use permit. I watched the planning commission meeting online, but I couldn't always hear everything very well. So just curious on condition 13, where it's talking about insurance and that insurance shall name the City of Willows, its officials, employees and attorneys as additional insured. So I've never seen that in a use permit before and, you know, we don't own the building, we don't own the business. So just curious why we're asking to be named as an additional insured.
I will, I'll pass that to the city attorney again, as I think he answered it the first go around. It is something that's listed out in our Willows Municipal Code to include in the conditional use permit. And I think it has to do with being specific to the type of business that it is.
Well, yes, it's a requirement under the Willows Code that they have a condition that they name the city as an additional insured. And I think the basis for that being due to the types of activities that they, this business does, there is the potentiality of people basically claiming injury from those products. And if they make claims, they could potentially name the city as well. And yes, there's an indemnity clause. This is an additional measure to protect the city.
Okay. So we'll be reviewing the policy when they get it to make sure that we're actually named as additional insured as part of the follow-up.
Yeah. So we've, the system would be to add to track that and ensure we get the certificates and insurance that come in on renewals from other companies, but definitely, yeah, this one would be, make sure we have that.
Just generally, when you do an additional insured, there's usually a per occurrence and aggregate floor. Do we have any defined per occurrence aggregate floor or is it just based on the GCL?
I think our, I think our aggregate current is, is a $2 million standard. But I would have to check that. I think it's a $1 million listed in this.
In the conditions, it's all.
A $1 million.
Yeah, in the conditions. And then on condition two, and it talks about it elsewhere, it just references a certificate of authorization. And this is in addition to the Willows cannabis license. It's in addition to the state license. It's in addition to the use permit.
Yep.
So what is the certificate of authorization do?
The certificate of authorization would be issued by the city manager after approval by the city council. So that would be their, their final piece to the, the puzzle. Once this resolution signed, they would receive a letter of authorization.
Signed license per se.
Is that the same as the license?
They're also, they're also, well, it's, yeah. The business license itself is a separate piece to that. The letter would authorize them to continue forward. So I guess we would be approving their City of Willows business license and issuing the letter of authorization.
So it says a certificate of authorization shall be issued only to applicants who hold a retail license from the city, a use permit from the city and a California state issued type 10.
Yep. So the business license would be the, the retail cannabis license.
So we're not going to issue the authorization until they have their actual type 10.
Correct.
Because we can't until they have that.
This would be the final, the final piece of all of it coming together. Correct.
Okay. So what, it's semantics, I know, but it's sort of like, what purpose does that serve when they've already got all the licenses?
It's Willows Municipal Code states that, I think.
We need to update our code maybe.
Well.
I don't know why we need it.
Yes, it is a provision in chapter 9.20.080 subdivision one that they will, the city will issue a certificate of authorization once the applicant has secured all those other licenses and permits. I, I think it's, you know, basically a catchall final approval that all those other prerequisites and licenses have been obtained and we have verified that. And therefore this is the last bit.
And then on those same lines, I'm trying to see if it remained a condition or if it changed. There was a place where it talked about, you know, the use permit's good from it for a year from the time it's awarded. The life, the permits are going to be good for a year from the time they're awarded. And we're going to have different dates for those, which would make it a little trickier to just track and maintain. Is there thought from staff that we would maybe with this certificate of authorization, that we could somehow set a standard, you know, review period? The use permits, again, I noted at the planning commission that there was no review set up for the use permit per se. I know the permit's going to be good for one year initially, and then it can go for two years potentially on the second round. So was the thinking that we don't need to review the CUP so much because we're reviewing the permit?
Yeah, the, the CUP was, review was not added as a condition. The license, like you said, would be an initial term of one year to start and then reviewed annually every two years. So with this license, you've kind of got a review set in place, unlike any other conditional use permit where you would not.
Yeah. I just know we haven't always been.
Good on tracking those.
Yes. Thank you.
I mean, we can add something like that if you want. The council has the discretion to do that.
I think the point I'm just getting at is, you know, they're going to be getting approvals at different levels for these things. And so if, you know, the use permit, if you don't start your business within a year, then your use permit's done. So we don't want that to happen.
No, I think they would.
So that's where I'm just thinking, we just want to think, you know, holistically and say, you know, use permit was granted August 5th. You know, if a license is granted tonight, then they've got to get their state license. Well, they might still be working on that as a use permit's almost done and they haven't started their use yet. So then they'd have to renew their use permit. I'm just, you know, there's, it's just messy. And alls I'm saying right now is if there's a mechanism to say that we can align all these dates, so tracking is easier in year one.
I think the, the thought be tight, because going to a use permit that doesn't start until a later date and we went a year, that then they would have the ability to not move on the project if it wasn't going to go forward for that extra period of time. So setting the tighter time constraint with their option to renew seemed like the better option for the city. That way we had some control on like, you're not moving forward with this license. We need to open it up for somebody else to use.
Perfect. Thank you. And then I think just my last one, I probably have more, but try to be not too picky. Condition 22 just says whenever an enforcement officer has reason to believe that a nuisance exists. Have we given thought to who our enforcement officer is? Is it a building official? Is it the fire chief? Is law enforcement involved in this at all? Do we have a, a plan for actual enforcement?
So law enforcement was asked about this when we sent out a review to building fire and those kinds of things. They had no comment either way. They were neutral position on it. For us, it could be our code enforcement officer if there's building code violations. The fire department, if it has to do with fire violations. And as far as anything in a conditional use permit that's not regulated by the department, the Department of Cannabis Control would be the number one regulatory enforcement agency. Like we wouldn't regulate a liquor store, it would be ATF to do that. But if there's too much coverage on the window or there's a violation that we can control through the conditional use permit, then it would be the code enforcement officer and the building official.
So essentially, if there's any deviation from all the conditions, all the adopted things they said they were going to do, we're only going to know about that if the DCC steps in or if there's some kind of complaint. We're not doing any active enforcement of this permit.
No, I don't think, I'll let the city attorney to speak to that, but I don't know if that would be in our purview to actively regulate their, the marijuana tracking and tracing or anything to that effect.
Well, no, anything that DCC would, would regulate and manage, it's up to them. But for, for the conditional use permit or any violations of our code, that's certainly within our purview to enforce through our code enforcement official.
And I just don't see that anywhere. I said, you know, if a code enforcement person, we have no review, we don't really have any mechanism. And, and I understand that as a city, you know, code enforcement is not something we're staffed to do regularly. But this is a new thing for the City of Willows. If we move forward and we have this, I know that the community wants to know that it's being taken a look at. It's being watched. It's being, you know, walking the store, you know, and how are things going? And just, you know, not just not paying attention, right?
Well, generally code enforcement in any municipality or jurisdiction is complaint driven because frankly, no, no agency has the ability to staff and have, you know, proactive community style enforcement of code violations. It would, it would require reported violations that would have to be followed up. So it would be an after the fact enforce, you know, after the violation occurred. But that's, that's generally how all code enforcement across the state's handled.
And I just, I just trust that there would be a good relationship with our people. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Council member Hanson?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Mr. Benton Court and Ms. White and Mr. Sutton, I'd like to commend you on a very well-written plan of operations, including the security plan. Straightforward, solid plan, no frills, no nonsense. Good job. Well done. I really appreciated that. Solid, solid plan. With that, I have no further questions. I just wanted to point that out, other than the entire package that is before us tonight appears to be very complete in, in my estimation of reviewing all the documents. So good job on submitting the application. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council member, has he?
No, no questions. I just want to add kind of similar to Gary. I mean, reading through this over the last few days, because it took a few days to read through all of it, because it's that much documentation that to ease any initial heartburn, the application and all of this process is pretty robust. I've, I've never seen anything like it. So, you know, excited to get our first one and, and start learning.
Perfect. At this point, since there's no more questions for Joe, is there any public comment regarding supplication? Now's your time. Yeah. Want to get up?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Stephen Sutton and I'm here on behalf of Cali Love Willows, a proposed locally owned dispensary. I'd like to share why we believe this project will be a positive addition to the City of Willows. We are not a corporate chain. We're independent, small business owners with deep roots in California's cannabis community. Between my partner and I, we currently operate two successful dispensaries, Cali Love and Weaverville, and we recently opened Cali Love 101 in Prumdale, both built from the ground up with the community in mind. We've handled every part of our operations ourselves, licensing, compliance, inventory tracking, state inspections, and we've passed multiple Department of Cannabis Control's inspections with zero violations. We're hands-on operators who know how to do things right. But beyond running a compliant business, we believe in being good neighbors. Our shops are designed to feel upscale, welcoming and deeply rooted in the local community. We feature original art by local artists and create a warm, elevated retail experience that reflects the people and culture around us. We've supported community of organizations, local events, youth programs and nonprofits in Weaverville. And we look forward to doing the same here in Willows. We also plan to hire locally and provide extensive training to ensure our team is prepared, knowledgeable and aligned with our values. Our proposal complies with all state and local regulations, including zoning, licensing, security, banking and advertising. We're not new to this process. We're seasoned, experienced operators who understand what it takes to run a responsible, well-regarded cannabis business. We appreciate that not every dispensary brings the same values or experience to the table. With Cali Love Willows, we hope to set a positive example, combining small business integrity with community connection and doing it all by the book. Thank you for your time and consideration. We're excited at the possibility of contributing something meaningful and beneficial to the City of Willows community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. At this point, any comments from the city council? All right. We'll leave it to the pleasure of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend approval of the resolution of the city council of the City of Willows approving a retail dispensary cannabis business license for Cali Love Willows LLC for the property located 157 North Butte Street. Accessory's parcel number 002162006 within the central commercial zone.
Okay, I have a first. Is there a second?
Seconded.
A first and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Is this a roll call?
Roll call.
Oh, this is a roll call? Sorry.
I suggest a roll call.
Roll call though. Roll call, though.
Councilmember Busby?
Aye.
Councilmember Pride?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Nay.
And Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Hudson?
Yes. Okay, motion passed, four to one. Next up, item 10D, general fund, yeah, sorry, general fund and apparatus replacement reserve fund and finance committee update. Recommended action, approve changes and updates to the general fund reserve policy and add the previously council-approved apparatus replacement reserve fund. Received finance committee update from the July 14th meeting. Marty Brown?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. And on July 14th, the finance committee had its quarterly meeting and it's the second one, its second quarterly meeting since being instituted last fall and since the passage of Measure I. And at the July meeting, there was a lot of conversation that I'll let the, the finance committee give an update in a few minutes if they want to add more. I know there was some discussion during council comments last time, but I just wanted to formally agendize it in case you wanted to add anything. But one of the recommendations in particular was to make an adjustment to the general fund reserve policy. In particular, was to consolidate the catastrophic reserve and budget stabilization reserve into just one, you know, general fund reserve and two, to change the capital and special projects reserve that was in the previously approved policy to the apparatus replacement reserve fund, which was already basically approved by the council and during the budget process earlier in the spring. And I wanted to mention that one of the reasons this came up in, in my staff report to the finance committee was just that these kinds of various separated-out reserves like this, there's like four here, are, you know, common in larger cities with larger general funds, but the city of Willows doesn't have a huge general fund. And so if we, if we need the money, we're just going to borrow one from the other anyways. And so putting it all into a general fund reserve and then adding the apparatus reserve fund that the council already basically directed staff to create seemed sufficient. And it's just confusing to have all these other reserve funds that frankly were not, like for example, the capital, the capital reserve fund has had $5,000 in it since I've been here. I don't know why our, our finance consultant, Andy Heath, you know, doesn't know why, pretty sure that our finance director doesn't know why, but it's random, $5,000. I mean, you can't do very mu, you can't buy much capital with that, right? So having these little funds like that didn't seem to make a lot of sense and having one general fund reserve and then this apparatus reserve fund consolidating those made more sense, given the size of the city and the size of our general fund reserve. So the finance committee asked that I bring something back before their next October meeting and make a recommendation of the full council to change that policy. So that's what's here before you tonight. And that, that concludes my presentation unless you have any other questions for me.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, our meeting on July 15th, according to my agenda. We reviewed the general fund reserve policy, the investment policy, debt management policy, and pension funding policy. I'll be candid with you, the debt management policy and the pension funding policy, I think you need to be a Philadelphia lawyer to truly understand. So we did not really address those two. The general fund reserve, as Marty said, had multiple allocations to different things. We felt one, you know, one general fund reserve was the best appropriate. The $5,000 that she speaks of for capital reserve, we would recommend that $5,000 be removed to the asset replacement or the apparatus replacement. And if that has not been done and if it needs policy, council direction, I would ask for that at this meeting.
Thank you for that reminder. I, I actually literally read the transcript from the meeting. It was a little challenging to follow what we decided at the end of the day. So I appreciate you pointing out that the recommendation included moving the $5,000 into the asset, into the apparatus.
Asset apparatus replacement, that $5,000.
Right.
The administrative procedure policy has a statement in it to develop a one to five-year reserve replenishment plan to meet the minimum threshold of $25,000 or 25% general fund ongoing operating reserve. So we've asked staff to report to the full council when we do the 25, 26 budget review, where we are with the reserve additions equal to, so we're on track to a one to five-year plan to reach that 25%. And that was one of the things that we need to report to our citizens based on the, on the finance committee and sales tax review was to make sure that we are on track to do that. So we would like to have a report that shows this is how much we've added to the reserve this year. And we have some challenges that we hadn't really anticipated, which always seems to come up, but one of those being the ALS ambulance and some other things that, that we were not necessarily prepared for, but we'll have to tackle those when we get to it. And that would be pretty much my report, unless Matt had something to add.
I just want to reiterate the general fund reserve replacement and, and specifically to just echoing what you said, making it easier to track, making it easier for us to ensure that we are not over allocating funds because money's, you know, spread out across four or five different accounts and everything like that, as well as, you know, it's not a lot, but you know, money earns more if it's in one big pile versus nine little piles. So makes sense. Happy and appreciative of the staff, looking forward to the October, October finance committee meeting with our first Measure I real report? Question mark?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have more to report on that. And you, you also gave us a pretty healthy to-do list between now and then as well.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I just add to it, in our July meeting, we actually had received as of that point in time, 141,201 dollars and 40 cents of our, as an advance payment of our sales tax. And as of last Friday, we were theoretically supposed to receive a first full advance warrant would be issued on 9/23. I doubt that we've actually received that, but I suspect we'll be getting that soon. First, first round of first quarter sales tax.
I don't know when, when the next round comes.
According to the calendar I have says that we should, that they should have issued that on Friday, the 23rd.
Of last week.
Mm-hmm. Oh, wait a minute, that, that's September.
Yeah, whenever they, when, because I had pulled down the amount.
Were we in August or September?
We're in August, but we should have received one either this week or just recently. I don't remember when we.
Oh, that's September 23rd, my bad.
Oh, that's okay.
I was looking at the top list, August 26th.
Yes.
Is a cleanup payment for the first quarter.
Right, so that one we should have already.
I got my jump lines on me. Do we know what that dollar amount is?
Do, I thought I sent it. Wasn't it included in the bi-weekly maybe? I believe it was. It was around one, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to speak offhand. I don't remember if it was 150 or 160. I've looked at not a lot of numbers every day, so.
Okay.
I want to say it was.
It's starting to come in slowly, it's dripping.
Yeah, and it's increased. It increased from last month and we should have a good, you know, when they do the quarterly cleanup, because our sales tax returns were due July 31st for that, for that quarter, April through June.
Concludes my report.
I, I did also just want to mention for the rest of the council who's not on the committee, it was discussed about whether there was any concern losing those other funds, like the budget stabilization and the catastrophic reserve fund. And, you know, what we, you know, discussed was that, you know, at any time the council wants to create a new reserve fund, we can do that. So just not using it anymore doesn't lose anything in the future if we have a windfall and we want to create additional reserve funds, that can be done at any time.
Councilmember Pride, anything to add?
Nope, I attended that meeting, so I was, I know.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, when this policy was drafted in April 2021, I was on the, on the council and it satisfied that, that policy satisfied our needs at the time and was an improvement. An amended policy from the 1979 policy. So at the time, you know, the important things haven't changed and that's the important part here. I view this as housekeeping, this just updating and making the amendments to satisfy our current needs, because we did at one time have a fire apparatus fund replacement up until about 2018. Matter of fact, the 2017 Ford, the former fire chief's vehicle, which is now utility, that was the last piece of fire apparatus equipment that was purchased under those former funds. So I'm, you know, really happy to see the fire and public works apparatus replacement fund be brought back in the fold. But, you know, this goes back to working project, living document goes back to 2010, 2011, when we first had our, after I came on the council in '08, 2010, 2011, those are the first terrible budget years, budget cycles. So this 21 policy was identifying a 25% reserve, roughly $1 million at the time, which was a good business model for us, and we did accomplish that, although the ebbs and flows that we know with the budget issues have hit, that's why you have a reserve, right? It's a savings account because things break, things happen, we all know that. So, no, I think the, I agree with the amendments. I think it's, it'll, it perfectly satisfies our current operational needs in its way. I view it, like I said, just basically housekeeping, staying current with the times. I think it's a good, solid policy. Thank you, thank you gentlemen for, for the recommendations. I wholeheartedly agree and thank you, Marty. It's all ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Perfect. What is the, the apparatus replacement fund currently at? Do you have a general idea?
$5,000.
$5,000? Want to buy a really shiny fire truck with that?
Well, additionally, if you remember for the, for the folks in the audience, when our fire trucks and our equipment goes out on strike team to, we've identified money that is paid to us from the state for the use of our equipment, instead of going to the general fund, will go to the apparatus reserve.
Okay, thank you for reminding me, I can't remember exactly how that's set up.
If, if we're getting paid $100 an hour for the use of our fire truck and they're gone for 48 hours, we get $4,800 to go to that account.
Yeah, they're paying for wear and tear, we should put it toward wear and tear.
So it needs to stay there, instead of going to the general fund where we've been needing it to keep the lights on.
And so, you know, and that, that policy was adopted by the council effective July 1 of this fiscal year. So we have had a little bit of strike team activity, but I don't think we've received any Cal Fire reimbursements for strike team yet, have we, since July 1? Yeah, so, and I don't know, I mean, Joanne, do you have a preference on how you want to move, like you're going to want to move it over once a year or when fire's over or every time we get a check?
No, I think it would be best to do it every time you receive a check.
I would agree.
Okay. So we haven't gotten anything so far since July 1 work for Cal Fire reimbursement.
Yeah, I know our engine's out right now, so hope those guys are safe. I believe he's been cheaped out.
He is, yes, that's correct.
Okay, cool. Thank you guys for all your hard work that you do on that.
I think we need to approve those officially, so.
Yeah.
For me to make that recommendation or motion, but I would need to approve those recommendations as presented.
We haven't gotten a public comment yet either, so. I just want to say thank you guys for your, for your hard work, yeah. Moving ahead of me already. Is there any public comment on the general fund and apparatus replacement reserve fund and finance committee update? All right, with that, I'll ask if there is a motion.
I'll restate my motion to approve the recommendations as presented.
Second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
I have a first and second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passed, five to zero. Next up, item 10E, sale of city-owned properties. Recommended action, adopt the attached, adopt the attached resolution approving staffed all necessary steps in accordance with California's Surplus Land Act to sell assessor parcel numbers APN 002-101-009, comma 005-101-006 and 003-113-006. Marty?
Okay, so this item now has come before you a few times, you probably have noticed. We have been, it's a fairly complex process to, under California state law to declare surplus land, and there's a number of steps. If you, as a government agency, want to sell some of your land, you have to go, jump through lots of hoops. One of them is, the first step is, or one of the first steps is to figure out whether or not you're exempt from the surplus land act. And so, and then after that, there's quite a few other, you know, steps that are included. So for example, under discussion and analysis in the staff report, as I listed out, the first step is to declare that the three properties are exempt surplus land, which we have already presented findings in the resolution. And then you supply the findings to HCD, which is the state, demonstrating that the council has adopted said resolution, making these findings. And then as deemed, the city may sell the land without complying with the California Surplus Land Act. And however, we must publish a resolution declaring the property exempt from surplus land act and the intention to sell said properties at least one time in a newspaper, post copies of the resolution on the subject properties, and hold a public hearing to listen to potential protests. Once all these requirements are satisfied, the city may publicly sell the properties. And then should the council approve the recommendation, here in the staff report, staff would recommend offering the two residential properties to the current tenants after, of course, we've jumped through all the other hoops that I just listed out. And at the appraised value, which was attachment three to the staff report, and then with some sort of right of refusal, I recommended a 30-day right of refusal from the tenants. And if not, if the, if they're not interested, and then we would move forward and market those properties using a realtor. And we would be also using the services of the city attorney to help draft a contract, whether it be with the current tenants, if they're interested in the property, or with someone who purchased the property through a standard, you know, real estate transaction. So it's because we were able to make findings that were exempt from the surplus land act, it's more straightforward process than if we, if we weren't able to make those findings, it would have been a lot more hoops to jump through. So anyways, my recommendation to the council is that we move forward with this. And at this point, I think this would be the last time I'd be bringing this before the council. I know this is like, I think, the third time, unless there was some glitch, if you will, in the sale of the property, for example, if, I don't know, if somebody came forward and the properties were on the market for a year and we couldn't sell them at the appraised value, and then somebody made an offer for less than the appraised value, I believe if it's less than 10%, you're required under state law to, to bring it back, because it's public property and you're selling public property, you'd have to bring it back to the council to approve something like that. So that's just one example of, there could be a caveat under which I would have to come back to the council, but assuming everything goes smooth sailing based on what's listed to here, probably wouldn't be coming back to the council again. Is that correct?
Well, with, with adopting this resolution, they would be setting that hearing, public hearing for the protests in the future. So it, it will come back to you one more time at a minimum.
But it's to hear the protest.
To hear the potential protest.
Make decisions about, yeah.
Correct. But, yeah, essentially, you know, this would give us authorization to, you know, if you adopt the resolution to proceed with the course action outlined in the staff report. And of course, we'd bring it back if there were any hiccups.
Okay. Questions from the council? Vice Mayor Thomas?
The only question I had, the county just purchased two houses very similar to these across the street. Do we know what they sold for and how they compare to our current appraised value?
No, I don't have any idea.
They actually just purchased one house, there was a garage on the second parcel, so it's one single-family dwelling with a garage. I believe it closed at 389. It was larger, more amenities, better condition.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, the appraisal's only a few months old, it's not that old, our appraisals.
Well, sometimes new sales make.
Yeah, one new sale in Willows can change every, I mean, the market can change quite a lot with one or two sales in our low inventory market.
Councilmember Pride, any questions?
You know, my only thoughts, and I know if, if the tenants don't purchase, we'd be doing an RFP potentially for a real estate agent to market them, you know, get exposure. Since they are tenant occupied, my experience as a broker is that I think we would want to have a decision made if we're going to sell them with the tenants, selling them more as an investment property for someone to buy them with a tenant in, in, in. Because if not, in my, in my practice, I will not list a house with a tenant. Because if not, in my, in my practice, I will not list a house with a tenant because unless they're out. You know, sixty, they, they're very difficult to get out with all the protections they have anymore. And they can create a breach of contract. If you think they're going to be out, you're in contract, and then they don't leave. Firsthand experience. So it's just, I think it's a mindset, you know, we market them. They might be a great investment property for someone to buy. They already have a tenant. I don't know if the rents are commensurate. So that might not be viable. And I'll defer to Andrew as the attorney, but I know that's always my, my caveat. They've been there over a year, so they have a lot of protections for.
Well, and councillor, you're correct. Um, the, there are quite a few baked-in tenant protections. And so if, if the city had to, uh, proceed with evictions, I mean, that would certainly add time and additional cost to this process because it certainly takes a fair bit of time to, to file an unlawful detainer and have it successfully pushed through. Um, and so I would defer to your experience in this particular housing market on whether or not you can get a, a, someone interested in buying it as a, with tenants included.
Because of the location, they lend themselves to being investment properties coming with a tenant because they're, you know, in a semi-commercial area. But if it was not, more people are looking to get into a home to occupy it. There's very limited inventory in Willows. So I think that's just something we might want to think about and play out pros and cons.
Well, and, you know, I have pursued unlawful detainer actions for other entities. And so I mean, it's something that the city attorney is more than happy, well, more than capable of doing. I don't know to be happy about doing.
Yeah, yeah. The other thing, I mean, for renters, the other problem is there's just nowhere for them to go. So a lot of times they just don't have a lot of options if they're, if they need to move out, and that's what complicates it a lot of times.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yeah, I think, Mr. Mayor. No, I, I have, I have no questions, actually. Thank you. Thanks for the, Marty, thanks for the, uh, excellent staff report, covered, covered all the bases. Thank you.
I agree with, uh, Councilmember Hanson. Okay. Any public comment regarding item ten E? No public comment? Any further discussion?
Hearing none, I would move that the resolution of the City Council, the City of Willows, State of California, declaring a certain city-owned properties as exempt surplus land, clearing the city's intent to sell said properties. Assessor's parcel number zero zero two one zero one zero zero nine, and I'm going to correct the error because it's book zero zero two one zero one zero zero six in this resolution. And assessor's parcel zero zero three one one three zero zero six. And according to the California law, and fixing the time and place for receiving oral and written protest to such sale.
Which, sorry, you wrote that in your email to me, and I didn't know what you were talking about. You just said it's still booked, blah, blah, blah.
The assessor's parcel number, the two are side by side on Lassen Street, and they're both in book two of assessor's parcel number. So it's zero zero two one zero one zero zero nine and zero zero two one zero one zero zero six. So that, second parcel that says it's in book five.
I see.
It's been an ongoing continually processed forward error. It's, they're both.
Sorry, okay.
Zero zero two.
So.
Everything else that you have as far as legal description in that is correct.
So that's a friendly amendment? That's all right, right?
That, that is correct. And I'm looking at the APNs, and so on exhibit A, both those North Lassen Streets are in book two on the exhibit. But it looks like the only error I'm seeing besides the staff report is in the title, title of the resolution.
It's in the resolution.
It's in the title.
Everywhere, yeah. So this is where you were speaking, I think, in, in your area of expertise from a title company, and you wrote book zero zero five. And I was like, I don't know what he's talking about. So I'm just going to go on to his questions.
Well, that's, that was the reference, because it's been a continuing, it got, it got five somewhere, and it stayed there.
We will get that fixed before they are signed resolutions, assuming you approve.
Seconded with the mentioned, uh, amendment. Any further discussion from the council? Um, one thing I, I did notice is where the pictures are. The APN is actually repeated on the two separate houses. It's actually the same APN repeated on both of them.
Right, and it's correct on these two pages. It is not correct in the resolution.
No, they both say zero.
Oh, they both say zero zero six on that. I don't know if that matters or not because it's just the pictures.
Say zero zero six.
So they aren't correct on the backside.
I know the main one's the resolution portion of it.
The resolution in the exhibit is what's controlling here. The additional pictures of the background is in staff reports, you know, that's kind of immaterial. But we'll correct the, the title of the resolution. But the exhibit with the APNs, and more importantly, the legal descriptions of those properties, that's, that's the, the real key.
Okay. Um, with a motion being first and seconded, um, I'm going to take my two seconds here and state that I'm still not a fan of selling the properties unless it's needed for the funds that, you know, we need this to balance out the general budget at this point. Or if we're going to use it to potentially purchase other land for future expansion.
You could make a friendly amendment and see if your colleagues are amenable.
Well, I think that's more of a question is, is this, is this needed? Are we doing this because we need this to be financially sound? Or we need this to relinquish a property that we just don't want to take care of anymore?
Well, I, I feel like we addressed that like the last two times, which is that, you know, needed is, I mean, it's, it's still going to be a lean year, um, because the sales tax is just now starting to come in. And there's still no resolution to the clawback. There's a hundred and six thousand dollar assessment for our health insurance that wasn't expect, I mean, there just keeps being things that come in. There's an interest in possibly purchasing, you know, a property near the fire station. I mean, there's a reason to have revenue and cash flow for other things that I think are of interest to the council and that just have to be bills that have to be paid, some of them unexpected, so.
So I agree. Um, I would like to make the friendly amendment that we, um, ear tag any potential sales for the potential purchase of new land, of any potential upcoming listings near or around, um, primarily our fire department. I don't know how many the council's been there recently, but I know Lori has. It's full. There's no room for anything in there anymore. Apparatuses are getting bigger. Fire engines are not small pieces of equipment. And as our town hopefully continues to grow, we'll hopefully be getting more volunteers or more paid staff with the closing of our hospital. You know, we may need, may need to be looking at how we're going to be offering our ALS services. And so there's a lot of need for our fire department to be able to expand. And right now, it's very well landlocked. So I don't know if there's a way for us to ear tag it to see about the potential purchase of one of the neighboring properties there. That'd be a city manager slash city attorney question.
We could possibly, um, I don't know, Joanne would know this better than me, but I think that with the Tyler project software, we could turn the sale of these properties into a project in Tyler. Is that possible?
Yes.
So. So we could, so that it's, it's separate, you know, bifurcated out, and it could be seen that it's sitting there. And then if it's needed for cash flow or something like that, we can come back and talk to you about it. Um, I, I would like to have, you know, some leeway to be able to come back and talk to you. Some of these other things that I just mentioned are all sort of coming to a head, and it is needed for cash flow before the new, the next fiscal year, so.
How about I retract my amendment and we just keep that as a general idea that we're thinking of?
Okay.
I, and I think it's a good idea because the property directly south will be coming on the market. And there's going to be a, a, probably a one-time and a who knows how many years opportunity to potentially acquire.
Good point. Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, at least thirty.
Probably, right.
Um, okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passed five to zero. Okay, with that, we will go on to item eleven, comments and reports. Item eleven A, council correspondence. I did not receive any. City clerk, do you have any?
No.
Okay. Item eleven B, city council comments and reports. Vice Mayor Thomas, anything to report?
Well, I have lots to report. Um, during our summer break, I got married.
Are, are you still married?
I still am. As the friend of mine says, my parole got revoked. And that was on August eighth, uh, on the bluff overlooking the Pacific Ocean. It was very nice. I'd like to compliment, uh, Carleen. If you look at those chairs, they used to be orange.
Oh, they did.
She took them home and painted them. Don't look at the bottom because they're still orange, but they look a whole lot better than they did those orange chairs.
They do, yes. Thank you, Carleen.
That's really, really nice.
I thought they were new chairs, actually.
To you and your husband, I guess he helped you, right?
Yes.
She did. She's got big plans for the curtains, um, other things in here, so she's moving in.
The curtains are probably some kind of an archaeological relic at this point.
You think so?
They'll probably go into the museum.
Probably a biohazard.
Dick, if he tries to take them down, wear a mask.
The only other thing is to extend a thank you to the car and bike show committee for their, and the public work staff for preparing the, uh, Jensen Park for that event. It was, uh, well-attended. It was a very nice show. We were blessed with great weather. And, uh, when, it's nice to be in the city of Willows where you have folks that put together and volunteer and get stuff done for the benefit. And that was a very enjoyable opportunity and, and show. So congratulate to them for success. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Pride?
I have nothing to report. I think I was gone the whole time between the last meeting and this one, so.
Fair enough.
Pass.
Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations, Rick and Brenda. By golly, you did it. So proud of you. Um, and I, I, ditto to Rick's comments, reference the car and bike show, like to commend Tony Wagaman and the car and bike show committee for just putting on an awesome show, uh, even though I didn't win any awards. I wasn't expecting to, but, but I didn't win any awards again. But no, anyway, they did a great job, great.
You didn't win the best smelling car?
I did not.
Or the most smelly car, one of the two.
There's got to be a category. Anyway, uh, no, it's fantastic show. Like Rick said, just great turnout. And the weather couldn't have been better for mid-August. But, yeah, I just want to, I want to commend that, the committee for just a fabulous show. It was great, great, great weekend, great day. Uh, on August eleventh, we had our monthly, held our monthly Glen, Glen Groundwater Authority meeting. Much routine business as we move toward, uh, implementation of the, uh, groundwater sustainability plan. But of important note, we, uh, we, uh, signed, uh, uh, an MOU, uh, for the planning and implementation of Blackbeak Reservoir Infrastructure Enhancement Project. This is going to a number of, 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 of boards in the, uh, Glen and Tahama County area, including the Board of Supervisors and the City of Orland. And, uh, anyway, uh, there's no cost, cost linked to it. But when Blackbeak Reservoir was constructed, it currently, the capacity is a little in excess of a hundred and forty-three thousand acre feet. It was actually designed, the spillway was designed for five hundred and fourteen-foot elevation to contain three hundred and fifty-four thousand acre feet. There were some, uh, some, uh, you know, not all of the, uh, the, the engineering, uh, improvements were allotted in the construction. For some reason, the construction wasn't completed. So, uh, can increase, uh, can increase storage quite a bit. Uh, so that's something to look at for, uh, not only flood control, but also recharge the Stony Creek area, which recharges a good chunk of Glen County of our sub-basin. When Stony Creek runs, uh, groundwater recharge, uh, is in effect, as it has been since the drought ended, thank God. So that was the most noticeable. So stay tuned on that. This is a long-term project. It's going to, uh, uh, begin with a study. We, like I say, we haven't talked costs yet, but we will down, down in the future. But it's just good, this is a good, good planning model. As, uh, Jim Yoder mentioned when he spoke, uh, this past Friday, August twenty-second, uh, Rick and I and Marty attended a public safety committee meeting along with, uh, uh, Jim Yoder and Tony Aron, the Board of Supervisors here at the city council chambers. Stay tuned for an agenda item, action item at our, at our very next meeting concerning that, uh, that discussion. As Jim indicated, we did have a, we had a, we had a great meeting. So, uh, that's really all about all I had. Just, uh, uh, you know, uh, I want to thank the entire city team for just continuing to do outstanding work all the way across to all departments, uh, just getting the work done, working hard, trying to do the right thing. So, uh, thank you to Marty and the entire city team for your ongoing outstanding work as you do day in and day out, and much of it, uh, in the background unsung. But, uh, good job, good job, everybody. And Carleen, beautiful, beautiful work. I thought they were new chairs, but they don't feel like, they look like new chairs. They don't feel like new chairs. But they look like new chairs. Nice improvement. But seriously, uh, biohazard on those, on those curtains. Yeah, like Marty says, mask up, boy, I tell you.
They'll probably fall off.
Eighteen sixty-nine, eighteen sixty-nine. I think Dr. Town picked them out. Yeah, so.
Never been down?
Probably not.
All right, that's all I had.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Busby?
The, during the break, I had an extremely, uh, busy time with the day job. I unfortunately had to miss the library board meeting, uh, so I have nothing to report out.
Okay. Well, I did attend the library board meeting, and there was no meeting, so there was nothing to report out for you, so. So they, I believe they did reschedule to the twenty-eighth, um, is what did happen with that. So, um, a couple of things. I did attend the RTC slash, uh, Glen County Transportation Committee meeting. Very light agendas. Essentially, it was budget approval, and that was about it. Caltrans was not, uh, was on vacation, so we didn't get an update from Caltrans on any of their projects. Um, so that was pretty, um, pretty low-key meeting for me. There wasn't a whole lot to report out. Um, as far as the hospital goes, um, it is a sad thing to see it, see our emergency room going. Um, I did, uh, email Lauren and asked a couple of extra questions and things like that. And you can really tell that she's been putting her heart and soul into, uh, trying to find ways to keep that emergency room open. Um, it's just really unfortunate that, uh, you know, big government doesn't really see it that way. As, as we do as locals to, uh, that emergency room that use it. So, um, again, I also missed the car and bike show, but I did sound, it sounded like it was a blast and heard that it was, um, one of the largest we've had in quite a few years. Can you?
Oh, God, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, the, uh, the cars were lined up down to the softball field. I did, I didn't get in, hear a number, but a lot of cars, a lot of cars.
It's been very, uh, it's been quite a few years since I've seen vehicles parked out into the softball fields. And I believe this year they were actually all the way out into, uh, the outfield of the softball fields. So, um, that's a good sign. That means that it's coming back. So, um, with that, I was going to ask Joe and Marty, we talked about this, the park update. And, um, uh, while we were all kind of on our break, there was, uh, a potential outbreak that somebody started with the local news outlet. And so that we know has been debunked. Um, but, uh, I was just kind of looking for a general update as to where we're at with the park. Um, most importantly, the pool and, uh, where we're at with that.
Well, you must have read our minds because actually there is going to be a presentation at the September ninth meeting on update on the parks. I'm going to be emailing you unless you want to download it now about what other things you'd like to hear from us about that update that you'd asked for maybe three months ago now. Um, the one thing that we recalled, we actually talked about it today, in fact, was that an update on like, what are the things that are needed to be done in the parks, what improvements need to be done? Um, I'll probably just take the rotary list that they got and, and we'll, we'll share that and that, use, use that in the presentation. But if there's any more that you want to see or hear, and I'll put this memorialize this in an email to you because you asked for it, uh, that'd be great, um, because Joey's going to put together a presentation for the night. And then he does have an update on the swimming pool.
Okay. Good evening. Uh, so the, the swimming pool update, um, I believe I'd mentioned before that we'd ran into a budget issue with the, with the pool portion of it itself. It, it came in close to a million dollars over budget from what we had originally expected. And that was due to a previous estimate that, that was, that the grant was based on that looked at things to get the pool back to up and running, but not back to a full compliant pool that we'd need ADA things, skimmers, um, bunch of, bunch of different stuff. Um, so that, that kind of set us back a little bit. We ended up knocking out, taking off the solar for that location, which would have been a solar roof for the, um, bathroom and the showers, and then a sol, a solar shade structure, um, over where the elevated pad was previously.
And the showers and then a solar shade structure over where the elevated pad was previously. So that got us down $500,000 and we made some, some other cuts. Reduced the bathroom pool house structure by about $150,000. I'm able to change the floor inlets at the pool, that was 60 grand. And then brought in development impact fees into the equation, which added about $300,000 on the, on the revenue side of it. So when we, we looked at all those things, we were still short a little bit. And the pathway lightings was kind of the next thing that we could eliminate and that was a cost at $425,000. And that's mainly labor, running the, the lights and all that stuff. But when we, we take that out, we, we come out to an estimate that puts us about 300,000 on the positive side of it. So our final thought on, on doing this, and this is what we've moved forward with, is adding the pathway lights as an additive alternate to the bid itself. So we've got our base bid and then we hope, and normally these engineer estimates are always a little high. That we'll have the funding available to put the pathway lights back in the project itself. But at this point, this got us down to a good budget. Hopefully we'll be able to do the pathway lights. So this will include still a full remodel of the pool, a little less of a roof over the bathhouse. All the pathways will be redone in concrete. The pickleball courts will come in with the turf, the tennis courts getting resurfaced. And then a perimeter sidewalk and curb ramp thing. So basically with removing the solar, hopefully not having to redo, eliminate the full pathway lighting. We're going to get there, but we, we're hopeful that we can have that pathway lighting in as well. Regardless, the base bid still installs conduit under the sidewalk as it's being replaced. So that way, if we do find funding in the future for pathway lighting, we've got that set up for it. Timeline wise, we're looking to get 90% reviewed in two to three weeks. We have our full, we have our swimming pool plans finally getting started and, and going. We haven't seen those yet, but we'll be getting 75% submissions on those this Thursday, which we hope are actually closer to almost finished and, and 90% or so. So our goal at this point, I had to bump it back a little bit. I was hoping for September, but hoping for October to be out to bid. Usually that's a two-month bid window. So hopefully a contract award started in January. We've got 120 working day assigned schedule for this project. So that's a six-month time period with work week. And with the pool, we're going to really focus, you know, when we, when we sign this contract on getting that pool done as quick as possible. I mean, there's some concrete work to it, but we can accomplish these pool things that had, they don't have to be in conjunction with the pathways or with the tennis courts. Those are, the pool's going to be a very subcontracted out piece to it. So we want to really go gangbusters on that portion of it and have a, have a tight construction timeline to try to get that pool open by June of this year.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Yep.
One other quick update was since Fire Chief's not here, we have, the city has been sending out personnel. We did have a rural engine comeback from the Gifford Fire less than a week ago. And then pretty much the very next day, the city engine went out and is currently on. The Picket Fire, thank you. And it's currently on the Picket Fire along with our chief one, that's where he's at right now. So just keep them in your thoughts and your prayers that they stay safe out there. As they try and knock these fires down and hopefully protect some homes and, and people's lives. So with that, that is all that I have to report. And we will move on to item 11C, city manager's report.
That was my city manager's report.
I've got one more thing to add to it. Just, just one more thing, because it's, it's good news, I feel like. But we've got our Little Caesars in plan check review that'll be going in over in the Starbucks Plaza. So they're, got their building plans submitted for that. And hopefully that'll be a quick review process and we can get them. I think they're approved by environmental health all, all already, so. Another good thing coming over to the freeway portion.
Good news.
Over there.
And Jack in the Box is all approved, waiting for the Caltrans.
They're on Caltrans. I, I haven't got an email reply back from the engineer that I was talking to on it, which, which always makes me a little nervous. But I'll, I'll continue to reach out and see where we're, where we're at with that. It's basically waiting on the encroachment permit for the 162 drainage work.
That was a subject of social media discussion.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I will reach out to them, but yeah, they're at the, the final steps of the planning piece of it.
This project was six months in when I started four years ago on August 16th, so.
So I understand that it's all approved, waiting for Caltrans.
Yeah, they, they had something 12 to 15 civil plan check. It was a lot of, a lot of plan check review, but they are done on our end of it 100%. So they're, they've got their plans signed off and good to go. And I know they were working with Caltrans, got one revision and we're working to resubmit again. But that's, that's the last I heard of it about a month and a half ago.
You know, I don't know what Caltrans deal is with 162 within the city limits. It's one thing or another with that outfit. It doesn't make any, it's ridiculous, doesn't make any sense.
That's, as I understand it, is a very difficult process.
Boy.
Yeah. All right. Well, with that, we will go to item 10, adjournment. We will adjourn the meeting at 7:35. Everyone have a good evening. Thank you.
Thanks for covering it.
Yeah, you put me on the right one, because that was.